It is 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. Approval of minutes, April 11. I move that we approve the minutes of April 11. Do have a correction on page two. Where Jody said that Russ Janus was a voting member of the SU. He was not. I confirmed that with the SU's office. And I also know that Roger Aquadra was not a member of the SU board when he was chair of the SU Finance Committee.
So I'm just wondering, we shouldn't amend the minutes to do that? We should put something in today's minutes maybe? Because that was what was said at the time. So they meant it should be an accurate reflection of what happened on that, was set on that date?
Yeah.
And so we should put the rebuttal in these minutes perhaps?
That makes sense to me.
Were you resonating issue? I'm sorry. Oh, at the very time.
Under recognition visitors.
Yep.
Is there any other? But don't change them. Changes. Okay, we have a motion. No further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of April 11? Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Communications. Didn't have anything besides me?
My email exploded, so.
Okay, well, I'll start with an email from, I think we all, or maybe we didn't all get it from Jody. And I apologize for not forwarding it. It's just been crazy. But it's basically, she just wanted to note how much she appreciates Tori and her work as a board recorder. It's really great to have such a complete minutes to read. She talks about how other boards are using a format that doesn't say as much as what we have and keep up with what we're doing. And it was also terrific to hear the board talk about education last, at the last meeting. And she hopes that the board continues to talk about the students and their education. So that was from Jody way back in April. Christina?
My email exploded. I haven't been getting emails for two weeks.
Oh, I thought you meant email exploded because you had a lot of things.
No, no, my email stopped working completely for two weeks, so.
Wow.
Yep, made for good vacation.
Okay. Anybody else? No? I guess this will be the time for me to say, I mean, the board members now, Joe Carroll knows. That I will be moving out of Dumerson on July 1st. So that means that I'll be unfortunately leaving the board. And so I haven't done a formal letter, but because it'll come up in discussion later on, that. I just want to make it more formal. Say la 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 you want. Sorry. That's that. No more discussion about it. Well, that is, our community's lost. I'm happy for you and your family. Any other communication? Okay. Recognition of groups and visitors. Hello, hello. You guys are here to give the presentation. Hi, Dan.
Hello.
That was easy. Finances. Warrants.
I move we approve the warrants to the total of $90,636.52.
One second. Any discussion about those warrants? No? Sorry, I can't remember the numbers. All in favor of approving the warrants in totaling amount of $90,636.52, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Okay. That was passed. It was easy. Administrative reports.
I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow kicks off the Allstate Music Festival in Brownsville. This year it's hosted by Mary Hardy Bandish, our band director. The parade begins, I think, at 6:45. Follows the same route as the Heslop Parade, which means to a person born in Brownsville, the parade's going the wrong way.
Yes.
And I then, Friday night, I think it goes through Saturday where there's concerts happening. And there'll be a street concert after the parade at the Compton, too. And what else? So the STEM position has been reopened. The deadline math applications is May 25th. The change in the ad states that we're looking for a math and/or science license in the middle school per month. See what we get. But within the following week, we'll be looking at setting up the hiring committee and going through applications and doing interviews. A week from Wednesday is our spring vocal concert. Sback and kneecap testing in grades four and eight, kneecap, Sback in three through eight, has started up in the middle school first. And we did hire our first grade teacher to replace Annette. Her name is Beth Montgomery. Beth worked here for a year as a literacy parent educator. Annette has agreed to mentor her next year, which I think is good. And she had worked with Annette, she'd worked with Molly. And she quite highly recommended and had really, she left to start a family. And in that period of time, she has managed to keep up with the changes that have gone on in education, which five years, five years of changes, there's been quite a few. And she's coming back, having done her homework. So I think she'll be a great addition. And at some point, I'll bring her to the board through the meter.
So is this her first time teaching?
She came, she had taught Title I. Someplace, Dallas Falls. Was it Massachusetts or? Yeah.
Okay.
But she's definitely new, in, you know, that sense.
It's good that she's also been in the building. It's really nice in a small community like that. Somebody knows what they're getting into in terms of community, it's to your liking or not, so that's really a plus to her.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you. One down.
That's 500.
Yeah. And that's, I think, all.
Just dates, SU Finance Committee on the 24th at 5:00 PM. And the whole SU board same night at 6:00 PM. On the 25th is the Study Committee at 6:00 PM in Putney. Act 46 Study Committee. And on the Wednesday, the 31st. This is something we need to check. Would like to do it at 4:00 PM, but it depends on availability. New board orientation, anybody that has not been to that. That's where the sort of the behind the screen, behind the scenes Title I, Title II way, special education, all of that stuff gets described. And there's sort of a, here's how these operations work. We've found in the past that it's really helpful for board members to have that orientation so that there's, you sort of see who's doing the work. What's, what's the work being done at the central office? So supposed to check for availability. My understanding is that none of the three of you have done that, the new board orientation. And is that a possible date for you?
I missed the date.
The Wednesday, the 31st at 4:00 PM.
How long do you anticipate it?
We generally go one hour and a half, two hours, but as, as, you know, as you need to leave, that's fine. Marissa will be there. Lyle and I would be there. We would sort of go over those, those particular operations. Frank should be there.
Where will it be?
It'll be at the central office.
How do I make that work?
I'll try to make that work, too.
It's just, it's just sort of a background piece.
And where's the SU board stuff happening?
Can't get my calendar now. Don't have the location. I will find out. I can actually check here. But that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Since I will be not here. I want to step off of the SU board. And I would really be happy if Amy could take my place. So I'm just putting that out there. She has been a member of that board for a long time, chaired it, she's got knowledge that she has is amazing. And I would like her to take my place on that board.
When are you looking to step down from that board?
Like right now. There's no reason for me to go on the, to the next meeting. Makes sense. Well, I'm happy to serve, so. Thank you. I think we have some other committee reports.
Two.
Christina Emily Committee.
We gotta come up with a better name.
I named it, so.
In memory of you, we'll keep it there. The committee has met three times since we last met. Yeah, well, we don't have school board meetings. We've fill, we managed to fill our time. We started with looking at all the options. I think we had, you know, 12 possibilities in the initial look through. And because the charge is to, was to look at all the possibilities, we did just that. And we, over the course of the last two meetings, eliminated, or parking lot, parking lot is a good half of them. This is all complicated by the fact that the legislature is signing changes to the law, so, and it's been going through the sausage making process. So for us to really know that we've looked at all the possibilities, when there's possibilities being signed by the governor in the next week or so, or now, or something. We still may have other things come on. It's been a really good working group, I think. People have taken notice on looking at various possibilities.
Who's, who's on the working group?
So Sue Magliaro, Dick Ferkstis, Emily, myself, Jody.
New teacher?
And we've had Mary Bandish. And Jen Brown is gonna start attending. She was sort of getting through stuff. And then who was, and Lily DePino, Lily DePino as well. And so, and all the teachers that have been joining our Dumerson residents, which is nice. We are meeting again, I believe, next Monday. Just waiting to get a confirmation on some dates, so, and I will put that through to Barb. I have an email in to Bob Tivo just confirming next Monday evening. So I'm gonna have Barb warn it, so if somebody else wants to join and come listen in, feel free.
So is Bob part of the group, too?
Oh, sorry, Bob Tivo. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. I did that at the last meeting and then I didn't write it down this time. I'm sorry. Yes, he's been great to bring an administrative perspective and somebody who served on Dumerson School Board. It's really a gift to have him on that, on that working group. I'm thinking by the next meeting, we should have some. We've taken the matrix from the, from the Study Committee and sort of tailored it to be Dumerson specific. And put other options on there that weren't on the original matrix. And I'm thinking by the next time we meet, we should have some, we can share that we'll have a matrix that people feel comfortable, you know. Okay, this is how we see it, and we can talk about it as a board. But of course, you're all welcome anytime, not long before I'm gonna be warning it, so.
Thank you. Any other committees? I don't know if it falls under committees or not, but, or if it's new business. But I just figured I'd let everybody know that I was approached by the VSB to replace David Scholes as the, one of the local reps for our area. So I was appointed last month. And if there are viewpoints that do want me to take up to them, on all ears.
What is that, what is that role, exactly?
It's representing local school boards on the 2530 member VSB board.
Okay.
It's that big?
Yes. Because it's stable. Once a month for nine months of the year.
Where?
Montpelier. Yeah. So. Can I let you? Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Is it all comprehensive board members?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
How many, like, what is?
Local?
No, how many are from our region? There's myself, there's Laura Sabalia, and then there's Emily Long. Yeah, so there's three from our immediate area, two of them being legislators, which is very handy.
Interesting that you're a lobbying organization and two of them are legislators. It's an interesting, as we're looking at conflict of interest, that's an interesting perspective.
One of the pieces I know is, is important from our office is the model policies that come out. So if there are policies that are, if it feels like there's some, some holes in terms of needed, needed policy. That, that would be, you would be the conduit to.
Sure.
To kick it down.
Yep, happy to do that. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, so. I'm sure we'll be talking about the legislative changes. I do know that this sort of rolls into Act 46. But I do know that Vernon's ability to exit DUHS, you know, their special exemption was approved in the law. Just needs the governor to sign it as part of another bill. And I'm sure I'll have more info on the statewide healthcare thing to talk about with everybody. Because that's, we touched on it at the last meeting. And then I think that, that meeting happened and then, like, the next week, the governor made his proposal, so. There's been a lot of churn since that time.
Is, is VSB planning to come out with a position statement?
I don't know if they will or not.
Nicole Mace wrote a position.
She's finally starting to get an email.
Oh, yeah, that's what she said.
Yep, we may have. I, to be honest, I didn't get home before this meeting to look at my notes from the last month. And my memory's not that good to retain.
In the emails that I saw, absolutely that the SBA is taking a position that, yes, they absolutely are advocating for the, for negotiations to happen at a statewide. At a statewide level. At a statewide level. And that they're actively lobbying to do so. That's the positions that I've received from, from emails that I've gotten directly from the SBA since, since I finally got enrolled.
That's what I've read, too.
Yeah.
Act 46 discussion.
Oh.
Oh, that would make sense, wouldn't it? Unless you guys want to sit here. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Rearrange.
Okay. So I asked Lindsay and Lynn to come, Lynn got a grant this year. It's not tree specific. You can explain it a little bit more. But early on, at the beginning of the year, because we started talking about it last year. You and Lindsay connected and worked through your grant money.
We need to introduce.
Sorry. I'll just introduce Lynn Levine, who is a former Dumerson resident, former parent. And author, environmentalist.
Forester.
Forester, okay. And Lindsay Layback Royce is our 5'6" STEM teacher. They combined efforts for this year, and they're gonna talk about it. And do you want to go around? Do you know everybody?
I do, but I don't think Lynn.
Paul Smith, they work in the central office. Michael McGee.
Christina Naylor.
Katie Everest.
Amy Wall.
Emily Kalki.
Liz Dimick.
Tori Luker.
Great. Do you want us to talk from these seats right here? Just checking.
Whatever, yeah, that's fine, whatever is comfortable with.
Mrs. Sandy. So the Dumerson School has been incredibly welcoming to environmental education over 30 years. And it's been a pleasure to be part of that. And my daughter was part of that. I started the environmental education program here with parents. And then I have moved into fifth grade love. So I, do you know Jean Shaw? Is that familiar? So I work with Jean Shaw, and we've gotten grants for her. And then Bessie Whitaker for lots of years. We were in Amy's pond once. So we did lots of, so all the years I've been able to get grants to work within the school. But basically, the school's been excited about that and welcoming in terms of doing those kinds of things. So when the grant came across, the Association of Conservation Commissions dangled a grant in front of me. The whole, the whole state, I went, let's grab it. So I came up with a proposal about doing observation study. And approached Joe Carroll, and she was open again to us having studied that in our school. And so that's the first grant, which is studying observation. And Lindsay's gonna talk about specifics. And then, and then we got another grant.
That we're starting right now.
Yes. Exactly. And that grant is from the American Forestry Foundation. And they have, they wanted to have community involved in school. That was their mission. So seems unnatural, since we've been doing that forever. Bessie and I, and we got a grant to do a trail guide. And so that's the second part. So the first part is about the observation skills. And I don't know if Lindsay you want to talk about it?
Yeah, so Lynn's been coming in about once a month since January. And she had this whole binder and plan made up for the kids. And so she'll come in and often she'll have artifacts or a specific skill she wants them working, working on, like patterns in nature. And they have their little binders. And we read some articles that Lynn had prepared for us. So they read a couple articles. And then she has us do some drawings. And so I just grabbed a couple samples that I can show you. And she's really been great about working with the kids about scientific drawings. So making sure they're labeling things that they're seeing. And then they write a summary about what they're seeing. So it's not really necessarily art skills, it's more of scientific observations. And so some of the work they did was inside the classroom with artifacts that Lynn brought in, and some of it was outside. And the kids have really been doing a great job working through those. And I also brought, just for fun, because I always like pictures. This is a newsletter I sent home today that just had a couple pictures of the kids working outside. And they have been so excited about it. They're very hardworking. They're very invested in what Lynn's doing and very interested to hear what Lynn's doing. Lynn is fabulous about talking about kind of her job and how that plays into her work in the classroom. Being an author, they also got to read a first draft of a chapter of her new book. And then gave feedback on it. And then got to read a second draft with the feedback that they had provided, which they just thought was the most amazing thing in the world. So they're continually asking when Lynn is coming in. And the next part of the grant, which we can talk about. The kids feel very excited because they feel like they're kind of part of this grown-up work. That's like real science, not just science in the classroom. So do you want to talk about the second grant that we're doing?
So the second part of the grant is creating this nature trail. And I have done that with Bessie before, and we're gonna do it on Prospect Hill. Yes, so that I'm not.
Sorry.
Good job. Excellent. So something, we're going to do, something like have specific spots up Prospect Hill. And then the kids are gonna go up and find those spots that they're assigned. And they're going to make drawings, do poetry, and create a guide that's similar to what's done in Guilford. Although Guilford, it became, Linda Lemke, who's a designer, took that together in a, in a form. But that's the basic folding pattern. We're gonna go up twice. So that first we write it, and then they come back and we launch up there. And I have to just say that Lindsay's been incredible to work with. You are so lucky to have you on our staff. So that's what I wanted to share.
And Lynn's grant has been generous enough. So we have two trips up, so we're gonna take a bus, and we'll have Lynn. So it's been really great to have the opportunity.
So will this be a finished product that will be available at the town offices or something, or?
There's a kiosk that's gonna be there.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Besides being at the town office and hopefully online.
Wonderful.
It's fun.
Is it free? Are these online?
Uh, they're not. They will. I haven't gotten there yet. Yeah, so I just started talking to the kids about the Trail Guide project, and they're really excited. I mean, like, I told the kids, like, well, she just thought that we were so great. That she wanted to hire us. And so they really feel like, oh, gosh, we had better, like, really do a great job. I mean, they're such a great group of kids anyway, that they're really excited about the opportunity to work with Lynn. And I've been really lucky to have her this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Part one of our mini-series of.
Great.
Guess who's coming to the school board.
So I'm gonna switch hats and be a parent. And a, and my husband's a former teacher at Putney's Central School. And I hope that you do not go for what is being proposed of centralizing the, the negotiations for, with teachers. I think that you just discussed that, and as I understood. So I am, as a, as a citizen of town, I'm hoping that you do not go in that direction. Because I do not think it is a fair negotiation with teachers. That's it.
Can I just make one comment? I forgot about the, for the committee reports, the SU Finance Committee met. Or not Finance Committee, Negotiations Committee. And no worries. I mean, that was not part of our discussion.
Okay, great.
It has yet to be approved. It probably will go to the SU board at their next meeting. You know, pending, be okay from the Teachers Union.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
It's nice to have the presentation.
Jam them in before it's all out there. Act 46. Well, Study Committee, we had, we, I can't remember. Well, we met once, but. Well, we met once, but there hasn't been a whole lot of activity. We are meeting again on ten, well, on the twenty-fifth in Putney at six o'clock to talk about the meeting that myself, Ron Staley, and Frank Rucker, and Alice Loughlin had with Rebecca Holcomb and Donna Russo Savage yesterday up in Berry. They, you know, the law has yet to be finalized. There's still some things that could potentially change. And, but they went through some of the different aspects of the pending legislation that would impact our area. So with highlights.
Did the, did the, did the Study Committee like approve for you guys to go and meet privately?
Yes. We asked for advice and guidance. We forwarded the report up to them. The Study Committee did.
Yeah, I understand there was a letter. I get that part. I saw that part in the minutes for the Study Committee. And I understand that the Study Committee had asked for that. But I, as far as I'm concerned, there was no notice or warning of anything further happening.
This was an outcome of that letter they offered to meet with us.
Did you inform the rest of your board?
I believe that that will be happening if it hasn't happened already, yes.
Did you ask for their, was this something that there was a motion that said it's okay for the, for select members of the Study Committee to meet with the?
There wasn't a form of motion.
Powers that are really making the decisions vis-à-vis?
We weren't making any decisions. It was just gathering information.
I'm talking about the state side of things. I'm just, okay.
It was a natural outcome of the letter that we sent up to the Secretary of Education and the State Board of Ed. They replied back that it wasn't appropriate for the Study Committee to ask for guidance from the State Board, that that really guidance should come from the Agency of Education and that Secretary Holcomb and her legal counsel, Donna Russo Savage, were happy to meet with, with, you know, whoever could come up, so.
I guess that's my question, is who had the opportunity to come up on the Study Committee? I mean, it just.
It was, it was Alice and she contacted me and said, are you available? I think she contacted a couple other members. We didn't want to have a quorum go up. But it really was, there was no decision-making. It was mostly just getting information on what, on our position, what, any guidance they could give us, any help, you know, that they could provide with their understanding of the law. And I'm sure, I know Alice will bring that to the group when we meet on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that report. Any other, Act forty-six?
I'd like to say it would be, as the alternate member, it would be, I understand the desire not to have a quorum, but also if non-voting members go, it's not a quorum that, when opportunities like that to become educated or made available, that somehow a group decision is made so that if people are interested in going, they could go, would be really great because, you know, you get a chance to think about it and inform yourself. And especially where I'm, Emily and I are serving on the alternate committee. I mean, all three of us couldn't have gone up. We would have had to warn a Dumberston Town School Board meeting, but we maybe would have chosen to do that. But to have that part of the process would really help us be informed board members and make the best decisions for Dumberston because, as you know, Donna Russo Savage refuses to meet with the Dumberston School Board. So maybe she will now, but.
They are planning probably on coming down late summer, early fall. If it would be helpful. And that would be something that would be planned through the Study Committee. And it, you know, and the, to be honest, I didn't even think about, you know, contacting you. I just found out about it last week, in the last week. You know, it would be something to reach out to Alice to about, so.
There may be other people. It might be a good Study Committee discussion as to how this gets done.
Right, that's why.
Or reach out to Alice for that piece. I get what you're saying.
Right, that's, reach out to Alice at the next meeting, about that kind of stuff, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. BSBA Code of Ethics. We all got Michael's email with his attachment of all these wonderful Code of Ethics. Two copies? Actually, make three.
Do you, you want a copy as well?
Sure.
Four.
Four.
If it's under five, you're okay.
So we can just sit here and stare at each other awkwardly while we wait for the proper machine to warm up. Well, I have been under other, but do you want to talk about that now while we're, we can? Well, we need to wait for Christina to come back, right? That's a good question. You know what I don't think I have is a copy of Code of Ethics that we signed last summer.
Are the ones that were signed last year or is it?
Well, the one that you were asking us to sign.
They are, as far as I know, they are identical. I don't think that there are changes year to year.
No, we didn't sign it, but I was just, I didn't bring a copy to compare.
Uh, here we go. This is from five thirteen fourteen. And there's one from twelve. I think that's all we've got. So here's the, sorry, I'm. Act for the discover my official role, oppose the high ethical standards, respect my peers. I'm not seeing, you're accusing me. It looks pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, same.
The same and even going back to twelve. You know, it's there. Yeah, looks like it's been the boilerplate for some time. Oh, here's the one from fourteen. Oh, I guess it's the same.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Are there two copies here?
Just one copy.
Oh, that's a long paper. So, Michael, what did you discover by doing this research?
Well, I just, I discovered that, you know, there are different policies in different towns, that they have some similarities amongst and between them. And that, I'm sorry, not just different towns, but different states have different, different policies. And then I think it's worthy of a discussion rather than just being presented something by the, by the SU to actually discuss what the ethics are that we feel we should adopt as a board. Maybe we feel like some of the statements in the, in the proposal are overbroad or maybe everyone feels like, you know, why don't we just sign this thing? But I think it's worthy of a discussion and not just a, here's on this document that we, that we prepared that are the, you know, boilerplate ethics provisions. So toward that end, assembled the BUHS Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy, which is most specifically avoiding conflicts of interest and defining what a conflict of interest is, perhaps more so than the proposed ethics that come from the BSBA. BLCT is really obviously a municipal. BLCT is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It's the entity that kind of works in conjunction with municipalities to help them with municipal laws. And so we got a copy of that one circulated. It's a little bit longer, obviously, but that's something that also looks for signatures. There's the BSBA Code of Ethics for School Board Members that looks a lot different, actually, in some, just in terms of the way it's presented than, than the Vermont Ethics for School Board Members. And then a couple states like New Jersey, Texas, Oregon, and Ohio. And, you know, I hope people got a chance to read them in advance. Seems like that's, that's one of the things that is common across, across the different, the different policies and what we're actually asked to, what we've been asked to endorse is really to come prepared to the meetings by, by looking at this stuff that we're going to be considering. And, you know, my thought was that we could just have a discussion and decide what to do from there. Whether we wanted to draft our own policy or whether we want to just go ahead and sign.
Or we could make modifications to that.
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. I think there's a lot of, yeah.
That's what we've done.
Definitely there's a lot of good template material out there, I think, is why I wanted to pull a couple different states to see how they, they approached it.
I know in the past that when we had more local board policies and policy review as part of our regular meetings, that we would adjust the model policy to specific Dumberston-related concerns, so. I don't know if you, I don't know if any of you guys were here when we used to do that. Well, it's, we don't do that anymore because a lot of it has, most of it has gone to the SU level where there's SU-level policies that are reviewed by the WSESU Board. And that covers the entire supervisory union. And then the board would have its own specific local board policies, you know, specific, to address specific concerns it had, topics.
So maybe I missed it, maybe it's been said already, this isn't policy, this is a pledge.
Right.
Right. And there are extant board policies.
Correct.
In place, conflict of interest. So this is, this is. Something, something different.
Yep. So did anyone notice anything on these other ones that they thought, wow, that really should be added to ours? Or is there anything on one that we usually sign that people are like, what's this doing here? Where's our existing one? Which one is that? I've lost track of that.
This is the, the ethics policy, the BSBA Code of Ethics for School Board Members is the policy that's in place. Is that correct? Which is.
I'm seeing B three, which is.
Code B three R in the corner of it.
This is the policy, that's a pledge. They're, they're both related.
BSBA. So the, the one that I'm seeing for the SU Board, B three is Board Member Conflict of Interest Policy.
B three dash R.
That's for BUHS.
That's what we have identified as BUHS, but that may be a policy that is applicable to all school boards.
Yeah, the way that the website lists it, there are supervisor union policy, BUHS, six policies, Vernon Town School District has its own set of policies. My understanding, and I think you actually have a better handle on this, my understanding is that SU policies permeate to the, all of the boards unless there is a, a local board policy that supersedes it.
Correct. That's my understanding. And, and really it was, we were spending so much of our time reviewing policies because we'd have to read them twice and then adopt them a third time. So it, and it really, the bulk of the policies were not being changed anyway, so it, and it was a recommendation, I don't know if it was from the Vermont School Boards Association or from our own legal counsel to have a uniform set of policies throughout the district, so. I mean, I liked, in the other states, I liked the first-person way that was presented. I will, you know, I, I, I thought that was very nice. It makes it more like a pledge. Yeah. In the existing pledge and the ethics policy, you know, it's something that I've seen numerous times through the years and actually have found it, you know, quite useful in terms of when there were issues that, you know, that, I know in the past that we have used it as a board, as a reference to remember how we want to interact with each other. I've, I've found the present form useful as well, so.
To me, it's weird that the conflict of interest seems to be separate from the ethics. I don't know. It just seems like they're sort of part and parcel.
Well, it's in here.
There's only two lines we have in here, but then there's a conflict of interest policy as well, I think.
That's specific to BUHS.
Ah.
Yes. I think.
Is that true based on what you see on the website, Paul?
I thought that's what you had provided us with.
There is a, sorry, I'm looking at VSBA. So this is the BUHS Board Member, is the ethical legal duty of all school board members, et cetera, definitions conflict of interest. And then I'll pull up the other one. I think they are the same. I think there is an SU policy, B three, and there is a BUHS policy, B three. Board Member B three, conflict of interest, adopted in two thousand nine, looks the same.
Looks the same.
So both the SU and the BUHS have.
It actually looks like it's longer based on the number of pages it says.
Oh, okay. So this goes to one of two. And then here's the.
Oh, it has the ethics together.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like it's appended to the SU Board Policy, the VSBA Code of Ethics, code B three R.
So it'd be the one that says BUHS on the top and this one together like that.
Yeah.
WSESU.
For the SU Board, yeah.
B three and B three R.
I guess that's my point, is we can't figure it out. And so wouldn't it make sense that Board Member Contact could be on one document? I don't know. Maybe it's just, maybe it's worse if we're differing from everybody else, but, or a sub-document? Because you think you have read ethics when you read one document, you know, like if they, if they pull up separately, I guess.
I think, and I don't, I don't know quite if I'm going to explain this, how I differentiate the two. I know that B three, the Board Member Conflict of Interest, that specifies legal references, so that ties directly to law. Whereas the Code of Ethics, like Paul said, is more of a pledge and doesn't reference any law. So maybe.
Yeah, definitely references some statutes. I see where it references statutes at the end. At the end of the, of B three, yes, of the conflict of interest. In that you would be, if you. In that you would be, if you were operating, hypothetically, you as a board member were operating in such a way that you were actively engaged in the conflict of interest, then you might run afoul of a statute that prevents it as well. But I definitely agree with you that that's not necessarily in the Code of Ethics, because again, it's really not on the forefront.
No. We have an F-rating, don't we, in the state of Vermont?
Statewide, so there really aren't statutes to reference with respect to ethics. It seems to fall on individual professions. Like, we talked about, I think briefly previously, that teachers have ethics that they have to abide by and probably veterinarians and doctors and sheep shearers, I don't know. I mean, you know. But what's interesting is that the pledge doesn't really seem to reference any of the, any of the conflict of interest stuff. It really seems to only reference, there's like one or two vague ones.
Yeah, there's two. Refrain from using board membership for political, personal, or business advancement. Recognize conflicts of interest and avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest in hiring, letting bids, approving contracts, and other financial affairs of the school system.
I'm starting to see some phrases from B3R.
Yep.
That are showing in here.
But not a lot of.
Yeah.
But not a lot on the copy.
I kind of, I wonder, and this is totally speculation, I wonder if this was, B3R was too big a document to, you know, sort of the notion was, how do we distill this down into something that's a one-pager? I don't know.
It seems like we could just have a document that said, I agree to be bound by the, by the.
Sure.
Policy, you know, entitled Code B3 and by the policy entitled Code B3R.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah.
That would simplify it and not cause any, you know, well, it's in here, but it's, you know.
Right. You could say, well, I didn't sign this, I signed that.
I signed that.
Yeah. So, what I did was fine. Well, no, because, because you would have the SU's policy about conflict of interest and that's what binds you. What you're saying is I abide by these Code of Ethics and then.
But it actually does, it says this Code of Ethics, meaning this individual, not this Code of Ethics.
Well, this might be something that, you know, you might want to bring the SU Board.
Perhaps, yeah.
You know, it would be, you probably want to contact Ron to get it on the agenda.
Something to think about.
So, how do we want to move forward?
I wonder if she should like take it in pieces a little bit and look at conflict of interest, which is like the whole thing as one section, and then there's the governance member relationships on another time, maybe to kind of break it into manageable chunks that we could all sort of become, because I think it's bigger, I think the conflict of interest one is really extreme, well, it's all extremely important, don't get me wrong, but it's like its own subject that's different from all the other operational issues. I mean, the Secretary of State has, you know, a six-page thing on conflict of interest and they talk about you should refrain from even the appearance of conflict of, of a conflict of interest, which is a really interesting point, because then if people don't trust public officials, so, you know, it's like kind of, as I've done, I got, it's like going down a rabbit hole reading about conflict of interest, there's a lot there. If we could maybe talk about that in one segment, that's just a thought.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah? What do you think about the BUHS one? Because it does have, I think, the appearance, the impression, the board, under number five, it says implementation. Board Member shall not get the impression that his or her position on the issue can be influenced by anything other than a fair presentation of all sides of question. It doesn't really go as far as what you're saying.
That's from the Secretary of State from our F-rated state, so.
Right.
So, the Vermont law provides a definition of conflict of interest. Conflict of interest means a direct personal or cunyary interest as a public official or the official's spouse, household member, business associate, employer, or employee in the outcome of a cause, proceeding application, or other matter pending before the official or before the agency or public body in which the official holds office or is employed. So, like if my husband taught here, that would be a conflict of interest if I were to vote on the negotiating of healthcare contracts.
Yep.
This small town, I bet that pretty much covers everybody, business associate, employee, neighbor.
Personally, and I hope this doesn't sound flip, I would rather focus on more educational-related issues. I feel like the current Code of Ethics lays it out there. I would wholeheartedly support maybe an independent topic at an upcoming meeting that's devoted to, like, something specific like conflict of interest and what that means. But I don't see the point in continuing to debate unless we have some substantive changes that we'd like to make to the Code of Ethics. It's a, it's a pledge, you know? So, and like I said, I'd much rather focus on things that are going to directly benefit students and learning more about that.
I think how we operate as a board and the pledge we decide to take does directly affect how we both interact with one another on the board and does affect how, you know, how we're going to approach what we talk about at meetings and how that, you know, will be beneficial for the, for the students of the school and the educational, I mean, it's an important part for the public to know that we're serious about this stuff and that it's not just something that we breeze over, but that it's, it's something that we look at seriously and take importantly, as an important, you know, step to serving the community. Just to make sure the school is running well, but it's an important part of the duties that we're trying to uphold, both fiduciary duties to the school itself and helping the students, you know.
Yes, and I understand.
Supporting the administration.
I understand that. I also feel like the oath of office that we took at the town hall, that really makes, that's even more important, you know, and that really covers all of that. That's why I'd see more discussion on specific topics that we wanted to delve into, maybe more pertinent than just sort of a general overview. So, so, you know, we wanted to delve into conflict of interest, sure. Let's do all that.
The oath of allegiance doesn't really have specifics, though, I guess, is the.
Well.
I just, I can't remember a time when this board has ever had a problem with conflict of interest. I mean, it's never.
Yep.
When we had a member who had a spouse who was teaching here, it was just automatic that they would recuse themselves if there was a vote.
Yep.
In bidding process, that came to the board, which doesn't always happen, but there was, like, the third cousin was relative, there'd be a refusal. It's never come up as an issue.
Yeah. I mean, I, I excused myself because I was working for someone, that was.
Yeah. I knew when inappropriate.
I would say this board has always, regardless of the makeup, had a really good handle on conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Things tended to get way late times by the interactions at board meetings, I think. That was what the conflict, the ethics stuff had come up.
You know, I mean, if we're going to spend time, I feel like, yes, we can, you know, we can look at this, but I, in a way, I feel like it's a bit of a rabbit hole that we're diving down into. And yes, it does, you know, govern how we treat each other and conduct our business and represent our school and our community. But maybe something more pertinent to our group is establishing the norms and working on, you know, group interactions. I know that the BSBA does have consulting services and I'm sure there's a whole host of other consultants out there that, you know, would, I'm going, at work, I'm going through some training now with my department about problem solving, and I can certainly bring that back, you know, to the group, you know, specific strategies, if that was helpful at all.
I'm wondering if, in the interest of expediency, if, and I offer to help, if Michael, who's, and I've been down the rabbit hole of conflict of interest, I lost like two hours of a day, like, oh, my God, I got to pick up the kids, conflict of interest, and come up with some recommendations for the board so that everybody didn't have to go down the rabbit hole?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if the board's okay with this, I'm happy to take the proposed pledge and if you guys have the situation to work, I'd be super happy to be able to edit it easily. And just add a couple of things that I already see in the policies, maybe, and present that at the next board meeting.
Sure.
That sounds good.
Does that sound like, you know?
Sounds good. I just want to say thank you for doing this research. I appreciated reading it, being able to the board.
It's certainly interesting to, I mean, stuff that you might not think about before you take a seat on a board.
Yeah.
And it's stuff that you definitely probably should think about taking a seat on a board, that's for sure. Which is why they presented it to us in the first instance, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
I like the other, seeing the state, the other states' perspectives, too.
I know.
That was a bit of a little glimpse into the world.
Some of them are very readable, which is very nice.
Texas, surprisingly.
It's very simple.
I have to tell the truth.
I will.
I'll share my views, Paul, you know.
Well, with an understanding.
Straightforward, you know.
Understanding, people don't read a paragraph anymore, so, you know, if it can fit in a tweet, it should be a good line in the policy.
Yikes. That will not be our policy.
No tweeting.
Wasn't being.
Michael. Okay. Thank you for that. Once again, I would like to suggest that we, it makes no sense to do norm setting with, I think you should wait till there's another person on board and you guys are a cohesive group. So, that's my suggestion for norm setting, that we table it once again. Is that?
I, I think we could, I think we could do it now.
Okay.
You know, I don't think that anything, I don't think the person should change the norms.
Right.
Let's put it that way. That if we.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we have, we have learner and long-serving and new people, we can endeavor to take that on ourselves, I think.
Okay.
If we have some time right now, maybe we should just knock it out.
Okay, let's do it. Who wants to lead the discussion?
Let's see, because you always, your groups, you've come up with some good ideas in the past. I know.
We had four. Norm.
Yeah.
Just actively listen, respect the opinion, and, and how you disagree, how we disagree. You know, are there certain?
Like disagreed constructively or something, or?
Right, but we have to be clear about that in our group, because, you know, that's where it tends to, the norms really are there to help when there's conflict, you know, nobody's thinking about norms when it's, things are just, you know, thanking teachers for coming. It's, it's when conflict occurs, which, you know, in public education, this day and age is going to happen, and how you go about managing it. And they all say, yeah, office is great, it should grow, it's, yeah, live without it actually is fine. You know, and then it comes down to kindergarten rules, like, two before me, two after you talk before I talk again.
I always like to reference the golden rule. I always think of Mrs. McKenna.
Yeah.
And the kids singing the golden rule in the spring concert or whatever. I guess I would like to see that as one of our norms. Follow the golden rule in honor of Sue McKenna.
What's the golden rule?
Treat others as you want to be treated.
Yeah. Or as Caroline interpreted it, treat me the way I want to be treated. I learned the golden rule today from Mrs. McKenna. I'm sure that wasn't it. She had all kinds of ways that I could improve how I treated her.
That's funny.
I think in the past, we've had discussions about how should we interact with both the administration and the public on issues that, you know, that the board is discussing and that both, both the administration being the principal and the SU have important input to add to discussions, but that it's no more important or less important than anybody else's input who's not sitting on the board. I think that would be an important distinction to make, because I think coming onto this board, it seemed at times that an administration member feels a part of the board, and really there should be some separation between what the board's role is and what the administration's role is. We all serve a role, like it or not, that needs some kind of clearer boundaries. And, I mean, I would hope that we could have board discussions first and then add in thoughts and commentary from both the administration and from the public. And I think it's, I think, both prior to getting onto the board and since I've been on the board, there's been some question of when should the public be able to comment? I think when it's germane to the conversation, I mean, these, these meetings can go on for some time, as we all know. And when it's germane to the conversation, we should, we should try our best to be able to hear from the public to see if that will influence, you know, our decision-making. And to have those during the course, like, during the agenda item, I guess that's the best way to put it in my mind, like, when we're discussing a particular agenda item and the administration and public and then public have a comment, we should acknowledge them and respect, you know, the time to allow them to make such comments, questions.
We did play around a lot with that, when, when we had a lot of public and a lot of comments.
Right.
And I think that turned out to be the, what felt to me that it worked the best was that for each agenda item, the board would have their discussion and when everybody spoke, then the admin and the public would weigh in on that agenda item. So, that seemed to work well when it, when it was a bigger, or when there was lots of things to say.
I guess I differ in my opinion of that. I like the administration to be an active part of the board discussion, because I felt like when we limited their ability to join the conversation and provide pertinent information that we, you know, we, you know, we were not operating with all the information necessarily. We would talk and talk and talk, and then we'd say, okay, and then, and so I think having the board be a part of the discussion, yes, they need to have clearly defined roles and understand that, you know, they are not the decision-making body, it's the board that's making the decisions. But I think, you know, limiting their information and their contributions to a discussion is, is not in our best interests.
I guess there's a, oh, I see, a different, I can't talk, differentiation between us discussing an issue and then Paul having information that is pertinent to that issue versus him expressing his opinion or being like, oh, I think this and this and that, or versus, you know, we did this before, or the law says this, oh, I'm just making things up, but, but then it becomes tricky, because it's like you don't know what he's going to say when he asks to speak, so it's, it's hard. And I think that's why we play around with it so much.
Yeah.
I will put out there that I am at times frustrated when I come to a board meeting and get presented with information that I probably should have gotten in advance from the administration that I'm asked to consider at that moment. that I probably should have gotten in advance from the administration, that I'm asked to consider at that moment, or sign, or do something, take action on, when a little advance notice and time to look at it might be beneficial. And so, um, that's some of my thinking as to why it might be, you know, useful to kind of, if we're not getting the information until the, the meeting itself, it's tough to kind of consider it in advance. And, um, and I think there should be, with, with a lot of these, you know, I think we've seen a couple of times when more information has not necessarily led to the answer that the administration has presented at the, at the time. So, to have a little bit of time to reflect on those things before coming to a meeting is, are useful, is useful.
So maybe one of our norms would be, um, written information should provide, should be provided in advance of the meeting for, for a review?
That would be wonderful. I mean, we can set that as a norm for ourselves, we have to have buy-in from the administration, obviously, it's not something that we can.
I think it, that's a, I mean, they've always been very cooperative when we've asked for.
Well, it could be a, it could be a norm, I mean, not that they would, written information would be provided, but that if they would like something, a decision from us, that the information is provided, otherwise, they're gonna give us the information and we're gonna look at it or take it home and read it and not act on it till the next meeting.
Yes, that's probably a good expectation to set, absolutely.
Not yet, Dan, we're not done talking, no, Steve. Yes, Dan.
I was gonna follow up on that point, um, I think it, it, it makes sense to do what you just said, Katie, but even more so, if, if there's an expectation that there's an action to be taken, it should be on the agenda, so that the public knows about it as well. So there definitely should be advanced notice on things that are being asked of, of the board, I feel.
Well, often, the two things are kind of the same, there will be things on the agenda that were put on there by the administration, and then, then we don't know what it is until we get here, so it's kind of the same, yeah.
I think I was, I'm agreeing, but I, I was going a little further, but I like the way you just summed it up.
Yeah, an example would be like to draft this exemption. You know, we have to, we have to vote on that every year annually to exempt ourselves from the federal breakfast program. You know, we don't get information ahead of time, other than, you know, knowing that.
But then again, you were on board when that first came out.
Right.
I could see why now, people being asked to sign that, do a vote on the breakfast exemption would want more information about it ahead of time.
Right, and there's also been things where we were asked to, like, look over action plans and talk, so.
One, one percent fund.
Yeah, well, all those things, I feel that when Barb sends out the agenda in the minutes, if there's any other pieces of information, they should just be attachments.
Yeah.
Like the, or something just as simple as the breakfast, when I first came on, I didn't understand what that meant, the breakfast exemption. I'm like, why aren't we feeding the children? I was like, I think it wasn't, like, the kids need breakfast, feed them, like, what's the problem?
We do, we do, less expense-ively.
So, it seems like it could come out, I know it's more work to prepare that far in advance, but that's just.
Except that you do it one time, right?
We're preparing an agenda, so, you know, it, it shouldn't be that difficult, so.
But when you said one percent fund, for example, like, it, um, the information ahead of time would be more than just being summarized at the meeting what they are?
Because you hand us those stacks, packets, and we have to read through them, and we're asked to vote on them.
Right, what I usually do is just summarize what the work is going to be, um.
Or you could do that at a meeting, give it to us at a meeting.
Right, you don't have to necessarily approve it at that meeting.
And then we would vote, approve it at a following meeting, but that meeting time isn't spent going like, what? Ah, what does this mean? You know?
You know, and I'm not sure every board approves one percent, that what started as just providing information, it's a contractual thing that is in there. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, because that money is contracted for teachers to use, and for board members to use for that matter. Providing information and when it became an approval or disapproval thing, I never, I never thought that disapproving would be an option for us. You know, it's just, um, if I bring it to you, it has, it's within the parameters of the money that we have budgeted.
And it fits the scope of the curriculum and, yeah, so it's been vetted in advance.
Right.
We don't approve if you turn on your lights today either.
Exactly, and I, I think somehow with Jim, it became a, he thought it was the right thing to do, so it became a voting approval, disapproval thing.
Well, that may not be the best example for this situation, but there's plenty of them that have come up in my time on the board.
Exactly, yeah, right.
One thing I would, and this is moving on to sort of a different norm, is I'd like to make sure that we're using our meeting time efficiently and we're starting and ending, you know, you know, because we've had meetings that go on for many hours and that didn't necessarily need to be that way, so, um, I don't know how we would frame that, you know, unless we committed to a start and an end time. I know a study committee has a, one of its norms is, you know, committing to starting and ending on time, but they go from, usually from six to eight, so.
I have seen efficiency listed in people's, but I think that, I think that our previous discussion would do a lot for efficiency, because if people have read everything beforehand, you come with your questions, you come with your comments, you have your discussion, it's brief.
Yeah.
And the times when it's gone on and on, I think it's been these issues that have caused it more than anything. I've seen efficiency on one of the many. But I, I, I agree, like, maybe we should say there's a, like, that the board should, you know, consider before we go beyond two hours, because, you know, in fact, the quote was in Vermont, a meeting that happens after ten o'clock, so everybody would be better served going to bed or something, I read that quote today. And like, a meeting that lasts longer, nobody's good after two hours, and I think an hour and a half should be what we endeavor for, of efficient use of time, maybe? Well, I guess if we meet twice a month, that's more reasonable.
Yeah.
Um, it, I would have, like, this month, it worked better to skip a meeting and do two out, two, one and a half, actually, we got out in one hour left. We tabled some discussions for that.
Yeah, we did.
Me too.
But, um.
You know, I don't wanna rush, but I also want, you know, I think it'd be great, I mean, we all sit in lots of meetings and it's just nice to have them move along.
It's one of those things, when you have community here that wanna talk, limiting the time immediately puts up a barrier in sense.
Right.
Yes, I agree, going past two hours, it's not easy. And what you get after that is hard.
Well, and you're also, it's your efficiency goes down, because you're not thinking as quickly, or articulating as well.
So, can I bring you, because you would ask me, and Liz found it, it was come prepared, use evidence, both data and anecdotal to communicate clearly about our students or our topic. Discuss objectively as a tool for improvement, modification of our programming, intervention options. Conversations are focused and hold-minded, observe time limits. And, but for our agendas, we can put time on the time things, because we know we always spend more than ten minutes on things.
Sure, thanks. Well, we could, we could do that here.
Yeah, and, and there may be easier to do on the things like the breakfast program exemption than it is on Act forty-six or community time.
I mean, one of the things, and again, this relates to what we're doing at, where I work, is, um, we, as a company, a lot of the meetings were never held with an agenda, you know, which used to drive me nuts. But now we have an agenda, and we've actually gone so far to say, okay, we are going to a lot, you know, five minutes. These are the agenda items that we would like to tackle, uh, within this hour, and we will break it out by this. And then we specify who's actually the responsible party to, to lead the conversation, and, you know, I don't know if we wanna get that detailed, but it might be a nice way to, you know, because really finances shouldn't take more than five minutes. You know, because we've had them, gotten them all in advance and read through them, so.
Yes, it is.
Same with the minutes, you know, I mean, we could put timelines.
I think we could feel pretty well about that, like, you know, unless there's a question like that, but I can do it.
No, I'm just using those as examples, you know, and then, you know, we could say, you know, five minutes for administrative reports from the S U, five minutes from Joe Carroll, you know, and it sort of gives you a timeline.
A big thumbs up.
Not, not that you talk incessantly, Joe Carroll, but you don't, anyway. But, uh, you know, just do a little more planning, meeting planning, I guess is what I'm saying, so.
Katie's on board with that since she can leave and share.
Whatever you guys want. Would, would it help at all, I mean, I would be happy to sort of take the things that we have talked about and keep in a list. And I, I type that up and forward it to everybody, and then get the school, the teachers' norms. And then maybe we could hash through, like, what we're gonna do for the code of ethics for the next meeting. In that way. I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kay, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have something on, on, what do you call it, setting the norm, or norm setting if you're done before you move on? Is this an appropriate time?
Yep.
Okay, I, I had sent an email to everybody on April twenty-seventh with a concern and a suggestion about something that I feel falls right in this wheelhouse. And that is a standard practice, or a good practice, that I, that I think would be good for this board to consider and, and implement. And that is, that whenever you have an appointed board member to a committee, whether it be a subcommittee of this board or an S U committee, I think there ought to be an expectation that there's good information transfer, uh, back and forth. And that this board then weighs in by directing that person how to vote. So for example, what prompted me to send this email was the healthcare, uh, negotiations that are ongoing. And I don't know if the board has been educated as to what's happening. And at some point, either an appointed member and/or three appointed members will be voting on this. And I think the board really, truly needs to understand what is happening at, at a bare minimum, and then direct those voting people how to vote in the best interest of this community and this school. So I, I think it's a, how I would bracket this is, this is a, I think, a good practice. Um, and I think that falls under norm setting, and I'd ask that you guys consider that.
Thank you. And I apologize for not responding to you, it was one of those things, I read it really fast and then I couldn't, I didn't have time to process it, and then next thing I know, it was too late, and then, that's what happens if I don't respond to email right away, it's just gone.
Do the same thing, so I understand.
Thank you, Dan. Um, we did the elementary report, pre-K discussion. We, I never heard back from Frank regarding numbers that Christina asked from him after, or the next, it was like the next day.
Pretty sure I responded to that.
Joe Carroll, what's our student population if you exclude the middle school?
If you exclude the middle school?
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty.
So that's K, K to five?
It's K to, um, six.
All right, so middle school is considered seven, eight?
In this district, okay. In this district, middle school's seven, eight.
I was thinking about the, um, the healthcare warrant question.
Oh, oh.
Um, what was the, what was the pre-K question?
We had wanted Frank to model for the school board the tax implication of adding pre-K, in-house pre-K, so we could count all the.
Okay, and that was from the last board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I, it's very familiar, I just gotta find the email and see what. When was that board meeting?
When was that meeting, March twenty-eighth?
April eleven.
April eleven. Yeah, I'm not finding it. I thought I had communicated that to Frank, that may be my, um, uh, I'm gonna have to do some more digging, that may be my, my omission, I thought I had.
It's like an agenda item?
We're getting, we're getting to an hour and a half, then, so we don't have the documents in advance, so we'll table it.
Um, agenda items for next meeting, code of ethics, norm setting, pre-K discussion.
Will we have another meeting in May?
Will we have another meeting in May?
I think we have to, only because the first meeting that you'll have in June will be graduation.
Oh, that's right, okay. So the only other, um, okay, so that'll be May twenty-fourth, is that what the date?
Thirty-third.
Third?
Yeah. So in, in that, I could have another presentation?
Another presentation, fabulous. Six thirty. Um, the other thing I wanna have under other is, what do you want to do about replacing me? Should we start now, and I'll have Barb put an ad out? Or do you wanna wait till I'm gone?
Can we just keep you?
If you wanna change the law.
There was a shower here in the nurses' station.
I know.
Fine, you're sleeping.
School.
I think it'd be prudent to start looking, because, you know, there's not a big crowd clamoring to serve.
Okay, and we're pretty good at this now, we've done this a few times.
Yep.
Okay, so I will, um, talk to Barb and have her start the process and get the word out. You guys, no potential?
Does that include, like, going on your newsletter, because that's where you get a newsletter?
Thank you.
What, um, date do you want, like, letters of interest and date?
Well, I believe in July first, I would think you probably want it by end of the month, or June, so that if there's more than one, they could come and, you know, see the board, because we're really, the second, first meeting in June is graduation.
Yeah.
We would really only have one meeting for them to come to, like, at the end of June, before we
Right.
don't have a meeting in July.
Right.
So yeah, it's probably a good thing to do it now.
Maybe I should just buy, like, a tiny corner of your land, and then I could stay?
I said you could live with us, Katie, I don't know.
I have a house I wanna live in.
You wanna live, you wanna live in a tent on Amy's property versus my home?
No, no, I meant, so I can still be a taxpayer if I owned a tiny little, like, how many square foot of land?
I got you.
Not live on it.
Can I ask when we're gonna meet in June, we're not meeting on the sixth?
I thought the first, the second Tuesday was the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, that's when graduation is.
Right, and then we usually meet on the twenty-seventh?
Okay, thank you.
So you are not meeting on the thirteenth, you are meeting on the twenty-seventh?
So we meet at six, or?
Well, if we meet on graduation, I mean, that's another option, I haven't been around that meeting on the sixth.
Yeah, we've done that.
But if we do end up having a meeting on graduation night, we usually meet at five thirty or six, and then, so that we're in there at six. so that we're in there at 6:30, but it's hard because the graduates are here getting ready.
The mother of the graduates in here.
That's right, we, what, about those kids graduating?
We always had a, I mean, in the past, we've had like a half hour meeting before just to do the business warrants and move anything forward that needed to be done.
I think I'm out of town on the 27th, though.
Again.
So the 23rd and 13th?
No, no, I'm working, I'm doing training.
So May 23rd, we're meeting.
And June 3rd.
And then June 13th, so May 23rd is at 6:30, right?
Yes. Can we meet at 5:30 on June 13th? Because.
Sure.
That work for everybody?
Yeah, and then graduations, what, at time, 6?
6:30, 6:30.
Okay.
So 5:30 meeting, 6:30 graduation. And then the 27th is just at 6:30 meeting, right?
So my worst, our district will still be in school?
Uh, yeah.
Like, oh, it's right.
But when you hear that.
Shining district.
June 21st.
You're kidding me.
The kids won't be there, but.
You will. Okay, so then 27th, 6:30.
Bring your fan.
You can paint your room.
I'm going to.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to?
I tend to motion, make a motion to adjourn if we're staying.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning at 8:02, you're so good. Please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent, you are adjourned.